Alrighty, so good morning again, everyone. This is attorney Robin McCoy. This is Political Coffee with Robin and Tracy. And we have our special guest, Mr. Tucson Knight. And today, again, I have my American mug. And I still have my Robus Red Bush Tea and Green Tea with lemon and honey. What about you, Tracy?
Well, good morning, everyone. Yes, it's Tam Martin, AKA Tracy. And welcome to Political Coffee for our second hour of Political Coffee. We're very pleased to have with us Tucson A. Knight. He's a candidate for Detroit City Council as part of our Meet the Candidates segment. And today, Robin, as an homage to the city of Detroit and our guest, I brought with me my Straight Outta Detroit mug, black and white. And it contains my go-to peach tea with a little bit of lemon. And welcome, Tucson. How are you today? And what did you bring with you in your mug?
Yes, welcome.
Good morning. It is truly a pleasure to be here with you all today. And I have a mug that I got about, hmm, in 2011, so about 10 years ago. And it's a mug from El Salvador. And I got to visit El Salvador for the first time when I was in college. And we did like a mission trip there to help build schools and teach people how to read. It was a wonderful experience.
Oh, that's awesome.
This mug to show.
Now, was that a gift? Was that a gift or did you purchase that?
I want to say that we, I don't remember. But I believe we, we got it from somewhere. But, but you know, when you're in places like that, you purchase a lot of stuff. So I don't want to lie. But it was either somebody gave it to me or I purchased it at one of the like places. So I can bring it back as a souvenir.
Okay.
Well, Tucson, you have a fascinating background because not only candidate for Detroit City Council in District Four, which features an interesting race. And we're going to jump into it in terms of who's in that race. You were the first ballot certified candidate for the District Four race Detroit City Council. You are also the president and founder of CAUTUP, which is a special mentoring program. And you are also the dean of culture at Detroit Western International High School, as I understand it, and the former Detroit Deputy District Manager under Mayor Mike Duggan. And I'm reading from an article here that was published and appeared in Detroit News. Knight has the support of some of the state's most prominent community and government leaders, such as State Senator Adam Holier, Holier, I should pronounce his name correctly, Chairman of the, and Chairman of the Police Commission, Willie Bell, and more. So welcome, Tucson, again. You know, the burning question is, well, two parts. What prompted you to run for city council? And as the dean of culture at Western International High School, do you, do you, are you bilingual? Do you also speak Spanish?
Hablo un español.
Always. So I'll start with the latter. I do not speak Spanish, unfortunately. And I, and I was telling myself, if I stay there one more year, I am going to learn Spanish. Because they have, you know, well, the students, most of the students speak English. But it's when you talk to the parents, that's when you kind of have the language barriers. And so, but it's worked out well for me so far. We have translators and.
Oh, how long have you been, how long have you been at Western? Because I, I, I worked as educational advocate. And I actually went to Western and I did a program on knowing your rights with encountering the police and immigration. That was a couple of years ago. So how long have you been there?
Yeah, I see started about two years ago. And I think, so if say, for example, we're at a new school year in September, that would be going into my third school year. So yeah, I started. And it was, it's been a wonderful experience. I absolutely love it. I always love working with kids and being there with, you know, Western is, a lot of people don't know. It's versus one of the most diverse schools in the city. And second, we have one of the largest populations as well. We have over 2,000 kids.
Wow. Yeah, I just wondered if you were bilingual and Spanish? Because you know, you mentioned the trip to El Salvador. So I was just curious to know. And so, yeah, why are you in this race? What, is it a calling? What has compelled you to jump into this? Well, you didn't jump into it. You, you were, you were led. You were the first to get ballot certified. What prompted you to do it?
Yeah, I'm glad you asked that question. I mean, you know, all my life has been about service. And I remember I was going off to college and people standing in a gap for me. That's, that's one of the biggest things I always say, like, people have stood in the gap for me so long. When I went to college, I'd been kicked out of so many different schools. I didn't have a no scholarship, but I met someone who stood in the gap for me. She helped me pay for school. She gave me a place to stay and she treated me like family. And so when I come like to Detroit, I always felt that way. Like, there's so many people that need you to stand in the gap. They want representation of individuals that will help them, that will be accessible. And you know, and that will help them resolve issues. And that's what I believe. That's what I did when I was Deputy District Manager. And that's what I'll do if I'm city council member. And I'm so excited to jump in because I, I have this work ethic that I love to solve problems.
Well, that's a great skill and desire to have. Now, when you served as Deputy District Manager, was it in District, District Four?
Absolutely. So, um.
Oh.
We're over here.
So you have an advantage because everybody knows you.
Well, a lot of people do. And I'm, I'm, I'm very excited about that. And you know, I can, I'm the only candidate in this race that has worked with the entire district. You know, so I've been in every, you know, every space of this district. I've been there and I've dealt with people and their issues and helped them resolve them.
Okay, that's interesting. Um, what about CAUTUP? You know, with all of this atmosphere surrounding the Derek Chauvin verdict and the issues with policing in America, I find your background as the president and founder of CAUTUP, a mentoring program, really interesting. Does it give you a special perspective on what's happening with policing? And the reason why I mention this is because there's an article in the media today that says that people in Metro Detroit are scared of a Chauvin incident happening to them. So if you could talk about that, CAUTUP, and the intersection with crime and, you know, police reform in that whole constellation.
That makes a lot of sense. Um, and, and so I want to, I definitely want to talk about CAUTUP because it's just been something I have loved to do and worked with a lot of kids. But you know, some of the programs that I've actually started and worked with the police was a program called The Brotherhood. And that program is police-led mentoring. That program, it was over in the ninth precinct, which has the highest crime rate. And we were able to get sergeants and the people from the ceasefire team to mentor kids in the area. And it also expanded to the west side of the city, which was just like wonderful. So when I tell you, when I think about community policing, when I think about police doing the right thing, is these young men being mentored by police officers? And police are seeing the difference, you know, because they're like, you know, they want to save these kids as much as I do. So now it's not like we're about to arrest them. It's like, hey, man, what you doing? Get off the street. Stop, stop doing this. Go home or we about to take you home. There's been several times, I can tell you, a kid got killed last year. And it was one of the kids that were closest to the program. And I remember there was a huge vigil for this kid. And some of these, some of the kids we have been dealing with had guns. They were like drinking. And instead of them coming to arrest them, they came, they took their guns and they took them home. They didn't give them, they didn't arrest.
No charges.
Yeah. And so that's what I was like, seeing that, I absolutely love that. And I also worked part-time for a program called Ceasefire. And Ceasefire is awesome.
Now, is that with Reggie Reg Davis?
It's the same name, but it's not the same. It's different. This is a national motto. That's my guy. But this is a national motto. And it's, what it does is, it's actually, it's driven by the police department and the mayor's office. And the goal is, how I started there was actually trying to be the middleman between the protesters and the police last year.
Okay.
Now, didn't you mentor Black Lives Matter as well? I read something about that.
Stephen Perez, Stephen Perez. So I helped him. And he, and one of the things that I was helping him was like, you know, showing him how to use his voice in a way without causing violence, you know. And he's been, he's also, he's always been that way. He doesn't want to create violence, but he wanted his voice to be heard. And that's been a wonderful experience doing that. And so bringing it all back to.
Beautiful. You sound like you, well, you know, looking at your background and all that you're doing, like you're really on the forefront here.
Absolutely. And that's how I've always been. I love being out there. I love being hands-on. So when I talk about ceasefire, we get calls at 12, one o'clock in the morning saying, there was a triple shooting here. We need you all to come here and help with the scene. So basically, can you help calm down the family? Can you comfort them? Can you make sure that whatever happens here, they're not going to retaliate? So find that influencer in the family, with that influencer around the friends and see how we can get them services to keep them from retaliating, you know? And so like, that's what we've been doing. We've been on the ground on a consistent basis. And that's how I've always been since I've been back to Detroit. And I love it. I love absolutely every bit of it. And of course, those things are pretty sad when you go to them. But it's just like being able to be there with someone is a blessing.
Well, I've got a question for you too, Tucson. By the way, do you think that you were named for, I can't remember the last name.
Tucson Louvichor. Tucson Louvichor.
Yes, Tucson Louvichor, right.
Haiti, Haiti.
Yeah.
That out to my Haitian people out there.
I can't tell you all the real story behind my name, but that's, I love that. I love.
Yeah, Tucson Louvichor. Thank you, Robin. I was bringing that there for a moment.
That's okay.
But this was my other question. Do you think that if Brooklyn Center, Minnesota, and Minneapolis, Minnesota, had a program like Brotherhood, that victims like George Floyd and Dante Wright, that those incidents wouldn't have happened?
Oh, absolutely. I, you know, me and my friends talk about this all the time. It's like, how do you, you know, a lot of times, police are not working in their communities. And that's what you're seeing in Brooklyn. And also you have, you also have that issue here in Detroit. But it's just a lot more emphasis placed on community policing. And, and you having programs like The Brotherhood, it just shows them a different side, like where these kids come from. But they're not all bad. You know, they come from terrible situations. They grow up without father figures, you know? And so it's like, they're not bad. It's just they need help and they need someone to be able to look after them and show them the way. And that's why we started CAUTUP. And that is why we started The Brotherhood. And you know, and these kids are, their lives are changing on a daily basis because people look after them and help them.
And I think.
Now, how does CAUTUP work?
So CAUTUP is, we started CAUTUP about five years ago. And I started at a juvenile center I used to work at when I was actually 19 years old. So it's crazy, right? The, the jobs I've had has been wonderful. But I worked at a juvenile center. And when I was working with the mayor's office, I was meeting so many different people. I was meeting so many business people and people that were influential. And I'm like, how do you connect these individuals with the community and young men? And so I went to Spectrum Juvenile Justice Program where they, they have kids there. They have about 200 kids in both of their buildings. And I was like, how can I help? Like, what can we do? And we talked, I talked with the executive director. He said, one of the things that you know, is that when kids leave, they don't have this same structure. So they end up either creating, they end up creating more problems for themselves. They end up coming back or they end up like getting killed, being the lead story on the 11 o'clock news. I've seen it on so many different occasions. So we're like, how can we create a program where the last eight weeks that they're incarcerated, we help them transition to the community? And so when we, when they get out, we help them find jobs. We help them get in school. And we also mentor them so they'll stay out of trouble. And then the eight weeks we're there, we teach them about, how do you apply for a job? Is college really for you? Financial literacy, how to eat healthy? So things like that is what we have been doing. And I'm excited to do that, to do that work. And then so that's how, that's what started CAUTUP. It expanded to a program just in the community. Saturday Night Live, basketball, food, life skills. That's it.
What's that? Live, what's that?
That's what I said, basketball, food, and life skills. Kids come from all areas. And I'm gonna tell you, you know, the craziest thing is that kids come from different gangs. They come from different issues. But we, I can count on one hand the amount of fights we had in five years at the, at our place. And I'm telling, it's a great environment. It's a brotherhood environment and people love coming there. And I'll tell you, we have like, each Saturday, we have about like 40 kids coming. But recently, I'm going to try to wrap this, this part up. We, we, we now have a center that kids come to. They have, it's a game room there. It's a computer lab. It's a movie theater. It's a kitchen. They can cook. And so now the kids, like they come during the week so much. We don't used to do Saturday Night Live, but now they come during the week so much. Don't even want to do Saturdays. Oh, we're going to use Saturdays for skating or something. But they come, we, on a consistent basis, get tutoring, computer lab. We talk to them and circle up with them on a consistent basis. And just come off the streets. It's a blessing to be a part of that.
And I, that's important. I mean, Tracy and I have both worked in the, you know, in the juvenile court. I worked with the Michigan Children's Law Center. So we represented kids on the neglect and the delinquency side. I was there for 12 and a half years. But I think that it's like all kids have this energy and have the potential. And it's like, they can use their energy in a positive way or negative way. But like the work that you're doing, it makes a big difference. They need to have like, because I've seen it time and time again, where kids go in the system. And then sometimes they go into residential, they do better, they thrive. And then they go back in the community. They get around the folks that are the chicken head of people and they fall apart. And so that what you, we need more, we need more programming like what you're doing for these kids. Because these kids have so much potential to, to be successful.
Yeah, absolutely. I totally agree with you.
And Tucson, well, tell us, how do parents, you know, get their children connected with CAUTUP? Because yeah, I work in the juvenile court still. And you know, their parents are just craving for, you know, programming like what's offered by your group, CAUTUP.
And that's exactly, you know, when I think about city council, I, I think about creating like resources, like CAUTUP and making sure that people know how to reach out to these different programs. Because a lot of people don't know me or don't know about the program or they hear about it or they see something we post like, oh. But let me tell you, I'm, another thing I do that's kind of different from a lot of programs, we actually don't even take kids that are like recommended to us. Most of the kids that come are word of mouth. The only kids we kind of get. So it's like the kids that come there, they tell their friends and they all want to come. And there's not, like, these are not the greatest kids. It's not like the kids that are like doing well for themselves. It's like, they see their friends changing and being a part like, yo, what y'all be doing every week? I want to go. And because when I've had kids who come like when their parents, like, oh, you're coming to a mentor program, most kids in their mind, I'm like, you're like, I don't want to do that. That's terrible. I'm about to come in trouble.
Lame or something.
Yeah. And so it's like, when your friend is telling you, it's totally different. Now, do we?
It's different, okay. So, but you know, do you have a website? A website or how do you find out more?
Yep, CAUTUP.org is the website. Or you can Google CAUTUP Mentoring. But yeah, the goal is catching up academically, intellectually, or morally, one child at a time. I'll forgive my own slogan, but yeah.
And then can people donate? If they go to that site, can they donate to what you're doing as well?
Yes. And I think that's another thing I should also be very clear on. We do not charge for any of our services. There's not one charge. They come, I actually transport them to the center. Like, we go pick them up. We do not charge for that. We took a trip to Memphis, Tennessee. We took them to a basketball game in Memphis, Tennessee. We took them gold card right. They went to visit the Martin Luther King National Civil Rights Museum where he was killed, the Stax Museum. Not one time did we charge because.
Wow.
Donate to our program. And I'll tell them, I don't want to turn away any kid because they can't afford it.
That's beautiful.
Wow, that's fantastic. Well, I want to turn back to the city council race. And so I pulled a quote. It comes from, it comes from the Michigan Chronicle. And you were quoted as saying, when you talk about what you're supposed to get out of your city council members, it's for somebody who's going to pick up the phone, somebody who knows your neighborhood, walk down your block, who understands what it means to show up. Actually, that was Senator, State Senator Adam Holier. So are these the qualities that you plan on bringing if you were to be elected as a city council member for District Four?
Absolutely. I, I feel like one of the main things that people want, like, is somebody to pick up the phone, somebody to show up, somebody to walk down their block and see what their issues are. And a lot of times, people do not do that. Like, they don't have this like, you know, people don't understand. I understood as a deputy district manager, when I walked down the neighbor's block, I saw something different. You know where I got this from, actually? Was the mayor is big on visiting the communities where, you know, that's impacted, like where he, where he serves. And so he would have us set them up in these house parties over the communities and he would walk down their block. And I'm telling you, there's stuff you, you can see differently when you walk down someone's block. You know, you could ride past the block. But when you walk past, you walk in, you see down, oh, I see all this trash in his backyard. I see, you know, all the abandoned, how this is a problem for kids to walk down on a consistent basis. And I'm telling you, I, I feel so comfortable walking in all the neighborhoods of this district because I've been there, you know, for seven years. I've been resolving people's issues for, for more than that. And so I really love just being a part of that type of stuff, walking down people's blocks, answering their concerns and being accessible to them.
So you're not a carpetbanger. You're, you're not parachuting and you didn't move to run. You, you, you live in the community. People know you because not, and not only that, you also worked in the community and are known as a problem solver. Um, that's great. I, I'm curious to know, what are like the top three issues that people are, you know, talking about when you're out there canvassing, door knocking? You know, what are the things that people want to see out of their city council members?
Yeah, I'm glad you asked. You know, it's because a lot of times, people have different ideas about council. But when you talk to people, it's quality of life, you know? They go on their block, you go on their block, they're like, I'm going to move because there's a neighbor that when I call the police, the police do not show up. When I call the police, you know.
I've had clients that have said that about the, the police. That's a big thing about not showing up, yeah.
And so that's the issue. But and I, like, you know, if there's a shooting or something, you know, the police is coming and they're going to come at a good time. But they're like, I want them to show up. My neighbor is blasting their music all night. I can't go to sleep. Like, you know, a shooting might happen once every two years on my block or something. But on a consistent basis, this neighbor is blasting their music. I can't get sleep. They're not keeping up their property. They're running everybody else off the block. Why can't we resolve these issues? Why can't I have a quality of life where that if I stay in my house, why can't I, you know, have, be comfortable and love my neighborhood and be able to go outside and, and have a good time on the porch without having some of this foolishness going? And so people want to see those issues resolved. People want jobs. You know, getting our, our city back strong. We need individuals to have good quality jobs. And that's why, you know, I, I, I love with the work that the unions do. They push for good quality jobs. I think that's important that we, we continue to do that as well. People want to be employed and they want good jobs. Not just like, oh, you can go up here and make $8 an hour. You can go up here and make $7 an hour. They want jobs that they can take care of their families. So, you know, I'll be pushing for a minimum wage, you know, and a living wage, $15, $18 an hour so people be able to take care of their families. One of the things that I think is also important is that they understand, as I do, and as we talked about, kids need a place to go. They need recreation. They need things to do after school. You know, I don't mind, it's devil's workshop. We all, you know.
That's right.
We're going to figure out ways, we're going to figure out ways, how do we help our kids, our future? You know, understand that they are the future and that they have goals and that they can help them.
Right. And Tucson, I'm curious with your background and your expertise, what are your thoughts on that case with, I think it's, I don't know, Makia Bryant, the young girl, the foster girl that was holding a knife and she was shot by the police? You know, I myself, I do programs on what to do when stopped by the police, where I go into the schools and colleges. And now it's more virtual. Virtually, I give tips. Sometimes I partner with the police on what to do when stopped by the police. What, with your background, what do you think the people should have done in that situation? Sometimes I say, I don't, we ain't calling the police. We gonna handle it ourselves. But what, with your background, what do you think should have happened differently with that scenario?
No, I totally understand. You know, I looked at that video and I looked at it several times. I did a lot of reading because me and my friends from college, we have a, we have a spirited discussion where we're pretty honest with each other about certain stuff. And, you know, and I see both sides of it, you know? And I hate to, to put it there, the first thing I should say is that nobody deserves to die. And I think that's something me and my friends talked about yesterday. Nobody, we don't want nobody dying. And I, I felt like when you have a police officer that shows up to a scene and their first mindset is like, you know, he tried to like calm it down for a minute, but it's like, all right.
Eliminate the threat, shoot to kill, RoboCop.
Exactly, yeah. So it's like, oh, this justified. I can get this out the way. And do I, I think he should face charges or thing? I, I wouldn't go that far. But what I will say is that I wish he would have went for his taser. Like, that's the time you want to use your taser. But I also understand that the girl in the pink, you know, I'm sure she was kind of, you know, she understood like, well, I'm sure she, her, her issue was, I'm glad I'm alive because she could have died if that knife.
Right. And you know, one of the issues was the officer not having enough time. I mean, when he showed up on scene, he had seconds. And the individual, Makai Bryant, was not in taser range.
Yeah.
So, I mean, of course, you never want to see a loss of life of anyone, in particular, a young person. But she, she was, you know, the assailant in that case. And so that's a tough call, you know?
It is.
I, myself, come from a law enforcement background. And I personally think no charges. The cop was in a tough spot and he did what he had to do. But I'm curious to know though, you were Mayor Duggan's former deputy district manager. Do you still have a good relationship with Mayor Duggan? And do you think this would help you on city council if you were to be elected?
Oh, great, great question. So, um, yeah, I keep a working relationship with everyone. You know, during last year, during a protest, I, we, I helped him a lot and advised him on some of the things I think, you know, they should try.
You advised the mayor?
Yeah, yeah. He called me, he called me three times about like, you know, what should we be doing about this? Or what should we be doing? And so I talked to him because I was out there. So one of the things that I was doing during, during that protest time, I was out there on a consistent basis. Like, every day I went out there and I was trying to keep the peace between the police and the protesters. You know, I, I was out there for the High King Littleton when all the protesters came to.
Oh, right, really? Okay.
I actually did like a story on it because there was a time when they let, they had left the scene from the Sixth Mile and they went over to the precinct, the 12th precinct. And it was like a standoff between the police and the protesters. And I were able to go back and forth like, hey, how about this? How about y'all guard the police precinct and let the protesters just walk through? And then it won't be this standoff. They won't start throwing things. And exactly what happened. And it was never, it was not another big clash. Because by that time, you know, I think a few minutes later, the chief actually showed the video and it really calmed down things.
Oh, I remember that. Yeah, so you're acting, you're actually in the trenches, in the streets. You're like a mediator. I mean, mediation that's going on. Oh, I remember that, yeah, so you're acting, you're actually in the trenches, in the streets, you're like a mediator, I mean, mediation that's going on.
Yeah, exactly.
Peacemaker.
Yeah.
I love doing that, you know, it's scary, it's scary, I'll be honest with you, out of all the times, and I was out there the first two nights when it went completely crazy. But out of all the times, I was nervous about that one, because I saw a lot of the community out there. I saw people just joining in with their cars, I said, this could be really, really bad. And so I was happy to be there and kind of like, what ceasefire, it was actually like ceasefire about its time, we were working the protest. And so that's how I was able to get out there, but I kept a strong relationship with the mayor and people in the mayor's office. Um, I do not, uh, I've not asked for, I've not asked for support, and I I did not, um, he's, he has not endorsed me. Uh, because I honestly, I want to be my own person, I I want to make sure that I run my own campaign, and that's going to be important uh for the.
Well, let me ask you something, though, I mean, if if Mike Duggan wanted to endorse you, certainly you wouldn't turn it down, would you?
Oh, I wouldn't turn, I don't turn down no endorsement, I mean, well, you know, of course, some you have to distance yourself from, but um, no, I wouldn't turn down.
Not specifically the mayor.
Yeah, no, I wouldn't turn down that.
Okay, he's got a race to to run himself.
Own race.
Yeah, uh, two top candidates, Anthony Adams, who was a guest on Political Coffee in March. And uh, Tom Beryl, he's running for the, what, the fifth time in four years, and I think there are a couple of other. Um, younger candidates as well, but um, this uh District Four race is very interesting. Because uh, you know, that was the seat that is currently occupied by Reverend Andres Spivey. And uh, the news broke the other day that he's not seeking reelection, so i- in essence, this is an open seat. And Reverend Spivey's not going to run for the at-large seat, as was rumored. And so you've got a couple of really interesting opponents. One in the form of M L Elrich, a former Pulitzer Prize winning journalist, who was also on Political Coffee on uh April third, I believe. And Judge Virgil Smith Senior, retired judge. Um, only two will uh make it out of the primary, I anticipate that, of course, you plan on being one of them, right?
Absolutely, the top one.
So what are you doing to make that happen? Are you, what are you, uh, in the in the pandemic age of campaigning, we always ask our guests this. You know, what's your strategy during this pandemic that's still going on for reaching out to the constituents?
Yeah, I think it's important um to still make contact with voters and like, as I stated before, I've done a lot of work in this community, so a lot of people already know me. But it's still like going out there, introducing yourselves, talking to people, handling their concerns. To this day, you know, when you go out, you know, you're gonna hear concerns, and I try to address them right in there, like, Leah told me yesterday, there's a dog, he keeps getting loose. Uh, there's plenty of issues, like, I'll tell you right now, I'm, I have a friend that works for animal control, I'm gonna call her right now. And she's able to, you know, get people out, so I still go on a, almost a daily basis, I hate, like, you know, this week I lost a few days. I go out door to door, you know, and.
Are you going out today?
Well, so the difference with Saturdays is, I I usually do go on Saturdays, but, so I'm actually seven day at Venice, and we try to get our rest on Sabbath.
Oh, I'm good, okay.
Trying to, I've been trying to do that lately, I'm like, ah, I gotta stop going out, but, um.
Well, but you're campaigning, I don't know, and then what I'm hearing from you, and I know what the people who appreciate is you are, you're hands on. I mean, that's what people want, they want politicians that are gonna be hands on, they don't want people that are just talking to talk. They want people that like actions line up with their words.
And that's right, and 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 I'm telling you right now, like, I just have the energy and I'm excited to get stuff done. So when people call me and they're like, hey, I have this issue, like, right, right now, we're working on an issue with with a ninety-five year old woman. Who porch has collapsed, and you know, and I talked to her, we've been working on that issue for the entire week, because I'm trying to find people to help her. And that's what I envisioned to do as a city council member, like, we have all these resources, we know all these people, all these businesses. How can they help the community, how can we get them to help the community, because that's what they need? And so I just want to be that person, as I said earlier, that stands in a gap, like, hey, you need a new porch, you can't afford it, let me find somebody that can help you. Let me find a group of individuals who is good with this type of work, and maybe they can donate their time. So that's how I feel like, as a council member, that's how I want to be, I want to be a part of the community on a consistent basis, that when people call me, I answer.
That's interesting, you know, that phrase, uh, stand in the gap, I understand that you use it with caught up. You said someone stood in the gap for you, and so this brings to mind the um black wealth gap. And there's uh recent news about um what they call local reparations for Detroit. And I'm curious to know, what is your position on reparations? Because if local reparations were to happen for the city of Detroit, certainly the city council may be involved. The city of Evanston, Illinois, where uh reparations are currently given to residents. The city council formed a subcommittee, are you pro reparations, pro local reparations? We know that H R forty passed the House, what's your take?
Yeah, well, I'll say this, um, I think that the city budget is a little tight, but I believe that the money is gonna come from the state or the federal government. I absolutely support, you know, any type of reparations, um.
Well, just so that you know, the idea is for it to uh, the funding uh stream is to come through cannabis revenue. Just like the city of Evanston, that is how they're funding, and it's not cash reparations, but for home improvements. Um, you know, to combat blight, so are you, is this something that you would be on board with? Or, I mean, what is your, what is your mindset on the idea of reparations itself?
So, yeah, as I stated, like, I I am not against uh reparations, reparations, I think that um it's important. And and of course, like, seeing what we've been through and over the years, a lot of black people have been through a lot of different issues. Now, what I will say is that, when I think about as a city council member, I would like to see our people working. I would like to see us making sure that when you do have businesses coming, they're supporting the community, and that somehow, some way, our community is benefiting. And so that's what I'll be pushing for when I'm on a city council, I'll be pushing for making sure that people are paid a living wage, that people are getting employed. And people are learning how to purchase homes, and, you know, we gotta get our people out of renting homes, but purchasing them, so they can have that feel of the value in the neighborhood.
But they can't purchase homes unless they can get um some assistance with uh, um, you know, a mortgage loan. And that has traditionally not happened in the city of Detroit. You know, these morgans, mortgage lenders, so, you know, don't give out mortgages. Um, now, I do understand that the mayor has had programs in the past, um, there's probably still one going on, but that's, that's fascinating to me. Um, I also reviewed your website, it's very good, by the way. And one of the issues that jumped out um at me was the concept of um food, access to food. And food deserts in Detroit, and you know, what's your take on that?
Um, can you repeat that question again, the the food you said?
Right, and access.
Food deserts in Detroit, people not having access to, you know, fresh uh fruit and vegetables and good grocery stores. I mean, you know, I live in Detroit, but I live on the border, and so I'm close to the suburbs. And I just get on the freeway and, you know, Meyer is five minutes away from me, you know. I can go to the Meyer in Detroit or the Meyer in La Fonia, but people, you know, don't have access to good grocery stores. That was an issue on your website, what's your take?
Yeah, sure, yeah, I think that, so first, I wanted to make sure, I go back to the home mortgage piece as well, because I don't want to. I don't want to lose that part, um, you know, we need to find ways, and when I was working for the city, we were trying to find all type of different ways. To make sure that individuals are being able to purchase homes. And so the Detroit home mortgage, those programs were birthed out of a lot of conversations. Um, you know, that also approves people that have a lower rate, there's also been a program, I think it was called NACA. It helps individuals build up their credit for like a year, and then they give them a loan. So we need to make sure that, first off, there's an educational campaign, people know about these different programs, and so that we can tell them, listen, you can own your home. And then when people own their homes, because like I said, as I'm walking door to door, some people, they can't afford to keep up, you know, that's.
Yeah.
The porch has collapsed, the roof is coming, and they're like, I own this house, like, I'm used to renting, I don't have to pay for this. But so also, like, that's why we have to have, make sure we have jobs and people to stay employed. And for senior citizens, you know, got to make sure that we're connecting them with the resources to um, to help them get those fixed. And putting more money in the home repair, um, you know, uh, funding as well. So, and then as it relates to the food, that's why my, so, if you know anything about me, like, I'm seven at Venice, we're big on health. Um, I'm actually a pescatarian, so I don't eat, I used to be a vegetarian, but I had to start eating a little fish, uh, pray for me on that one.
Yeah, hey, I'm I'm, you gotta, I need prayer too, because um, it's it's hard. I, my boyfriend's a vegetarian, I'm a half vegetarian, but half the time I had to have some fried chicken. I had to have the crab legs be calling me, it's hard, it's hard, I'm a flexitarian, I'm a flexitarian.
I'll tell you, I was like, I was talking to one of my friends, oh yeah, I'm both, I'm like, I don't know how you could be both, but okay, I got you. But um, but one of the things I think is important also is that. People and businesses will respond to the need of the individual, so if people start knowing the importance of eating healthy. So a lot of this, I feels like an educational campaign, I envision going to neighborhoods and bringing in people to talk about health. And talk about different diseases and, you know, how diseases um can connect to your health and how you eat. And so I I believe that's important, as a council member, I want to be that person that also helps educate my community. So then when they go to that local grocery store, they can start demanding, well, we need more fresh food, we need more uh better foods. And we can bring those grocery stores owners, the people that are here already, bring them to the community, let them know, like, this is what the people will start demanding. For you all to have in your grocery stores, and if not, you know, we can find other solutions. But I want to be able to work with the people that are there now, because they have given, you know, uh, like, people might not be as, you know, supportive of them. But they have been in the neighborhood, they have stayed there, you know, when a lot of major businesses have moved out. So what I want to do is be able to connect those people to the community, let them know, hey, let's do this in a partnership. Let's teach our community the importance of eating healthy, and let's show them what can happen if they do, because.
Well, Tucson, I know that uh there's a new Meyer going up on Jefferson in Detroit. I'm curious to know, uh, does your neighborhood, the fourth district, does that have a close nearby grocery store?
Well, we have. Some of the stores we have, I um, I love, it's like Audi, like Mac and Connor has Audi, and that's a nice uh grocery store, it's a little on a smaller version, but it's nice. And people love going there, they have healthy foods, uh Meyer is right, it's gonna be a little bit outside of our district, and I'm excited to have a place. Meyer there as well, but a lot of people from District Four will go to Meyer, because it's right there off Jefferson. And so, you know, our our um, the district starts at like Jefferson and Connor, and I believe that Meyer is gonna be up, you know, more closer, a little bit, right outside downtown. You know, so, but I'm excited that we are having those type of places come, because people do need, you know, like I said, better options and more options to shop. And healthier food options as well.
So you're on board with trying to attract um more grocery stores to the city of Detroit?
Absolutely, I'm on board with um that, and I'm also on board with working with the individuals in the grocery stores that we have now. Because, you know, like I said, they've been here, and we definitely should help them out as well.
I think it makes a world of difference, I mean, where I live, I'm I'm in uh Belleville, and, you know, there's a Meyer's, there's a Kroger's, there's a Walmart. It's all in short distance from me, and you 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 know, when I talk to my mom, my mom is from the south side of Chicago. She went, ended up going to U of M for nursing school, and she stayed, she, we, we were raised in the Ypsilanti Ann Arbor area, and I always. You know, I, it's like, we ask her, why, why didn't you go back to the inner city, and she said she wanted to be in the places where the best resources were. But it's like, why can't the resources come to where the inner city is, you know, because the kids, the kids don't always get to choose. They don't have the luxury of picking up and moving somewhere, they they still, they're our future, you know, and the people as well, their parents.
No, no, yeah, that makes sense, yeah, we need to create areas like, like you said, you want people to live here, but at the same time, you want to have. They want for like, when they move in a suburb, they want to have the same resources, the same access to different things, so we have to make sure that we're pushing that. And I will do that as a city council person.
Well, Tucson, I do want to ask you about spatial recognition technology. We talked about leasing, but that's a very specific issue, the green light program. Some have said that's been successful, although there's a big question mark about really how successful it's been. Um, Reverend uh Andres Spivey, who is a city council member for District Four now. Actually voted for a contract for facial recognition technology. Uh, to be used by the Detroit Police Department, it triggered a protest. I believe Detroit Will Breathe uh was protesting in District Four. Uh, it created a big media stir, and there were protesters that rode by Reverend Spivey's home. And said, um, F facial recognition technology, they were very upset about it. Uh, so, uh, we know that facial recognition technology is a flawed technology. Um, in an eighty-five percent black city, what is your take on the Detroit Police Department's use of facial recognition? Technology in the real time crime center?
Yeah, sure, yeah, I'm glad, that's that's a wonderful question, and a lot of people have asked me about that, so it's, I I feel I have to break that up in a few things. One is that.
Sure.
Look at um the crime rate and how many times, like, so whenever, one of these, like, working with kids, one of the biggest things, like, oh, we can't snitch, no snitching, no snitching. You know, so, like, what about your mother get killed or something, get robbed and carjacked? Was, you you want somebody telling, oh, I'm, they better, I'm like, one of the ways, you know, to do that is like, you know, you gotta be able to talk. So, but they're not, so I know by working with some of the police departments um in in Detroit. Is that they have a hard time resolving cases, solving cases, because individuals are, they don't want to snitch, as they so call it. They don't want to talk.
Well, they say, it's just, snitches get stitches, I do criminal defense, so snitches.
Yeah. Exactly, and so.
And that's not all they say about snitches, they find them be itches. Excuse me, but they do, but anyway, go ahead.
I learned something.
I'm sorry, but yeah, so one of the things that I believe is that they're dealing with a a very serious issue. Because we have homicides here, over three hundred homicides last year, I think the rate was like eighteen percent that got closed, right? So, and I also believe it's in the way you use it, so I think Detroit Will Breathe is a little out of touch in this situation. Because if you talk to most, yeah, if you talk to most people, they want to go to green light gas stations. You ask, you talk to green light gas stations, you'll you'll see how much their businesses have increased since putting those green lights there. And people feel safe going there, because they know it's gonna be monitored by the Detroit Police.
Well, you can have, can't you have green light and have the cameras, but not necessarily facial recognition technology? Can't you have, you don't have to have the the two, they're an.
Well, that's what, that's what Chief Craig is saying, that, you know, there, the green light program is separate, but um. Then that's a separate issue, but I mean, strictly on the issue of facial recognition technology. It it misidentifies black people, it identifies oftentimes black women as black men. Um, that has a high error rate, um, as 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 high as in the ninety-eight percentile. Um, I myself have protested against facial recognition technology, I've attended uh the Board of Police Commissioners meetings. It didn't do any good, the city council still approved that contract, so I, you know. You're saying that some people like facial recognition technology? And if the, if the constituents of your district like it, you're gonna support it, is that what you're saying?
So, Leah, let me be more specific, so, I was more referring to the green light technology. When the facial recognition became like a popular thing and started getting a lot of pushback, so one of the things that um I did was, I took a tour of the real time crime center. And the Detroit Police were creating these tours to show them how facial recognition worked. And so I think it's very important for people to know how the Detroit Police use facial recognition um as we relates to any anything else. Because others, you know, other people, they might use it for whatever, they might have, it's it's not the same with Detroit Police. So first, um, the issue is that they only use it for like carjackings, homicides, those are some of the most violent crimes, you know, there is. The the third thing is that they have a person, so I went down there, I was able to see, they they get the picture, they go through all these different things, the computer brings back people. So if that individual who originally goes through the facial recognition um computer and they pull like a match. The next thing that happens is, is that they have to take that to the supervisor, and the supervisor has to approve of that match as well. The third thing that happens is that they only can use that as a lead, they can never use that to make an arrest. And so I believe that the way the Detroit Police operates facial recognition is in a responsible way, especially as it relates to what happens in our city. As relates to homicides, so many people are afraid, because these crimes are not being solved, so many.
What would you say to Robert Williams, who is the brother who was wrongfully identified, arrested? I mean, I could tell you as a criminal defense attorney, day in, day out, I deal with people, I usually see them after they, they have been arrested. There's a police report, and they say, that's not what happened, that's a lie, I'm innocent. And so it's, I understand, I, with the green light, I'm not saying we shouldn't have cameras, but what, what do you say to the people that are, end up being wrongfully accused? They locked up in jail, and they're innocent, and I mean, how do you, how do we avoid errors? Where people who are innocent are are locked up and and, you know, prosecuted wrongfully?
No, 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 that makes a lot of sense, so, and I believe a lot of stuff took took place after um those. It was it was two different incidents where somebody got arrested, but like, I was saying before, now the Detroit Police, they only can use that as a lead. So they cannot go and arrest anyone, because they just got them on facial recognition, and like, okay, that that's, that's the only evidence we have, they cannot do. They have to build a a much stronger case than facial recognition.
So you're satisfied with the D P D's policy as it stands now in terms of protecting people's constitutional and civil uh liberties? And privacy rights in the city of Detroit, in connection with facial recognition tech?
As it relates to facial recognition, this is my, my biggest thing is that there are so many different crimes that go unsolved, because people do not talk. So they have to be able to find other ways to resolve tho- to solve those crimes. And so I I still want to have a a lot more conversations with the community and see how they feel about it, for sure. But what I also think is that, what I have seen so far, I am satisfied with as it relates to it. But of course, like you said, you had those two individuals that were arrested, and I believe that changed a lot of policy in the Detroit Police Department. And one thing that we have in Detroit Police Department is that we have people from the community, people that look like us, so we're hoping that we won't have these issues of, you know. The misrecognizing them like we had before.
Well, you will be representing, if you're elected, you would be representing the people of District Four. If you go around and have these community engagement meetings, town halls, and look, there are plenty of people in Detroit. Who say, oh, I like facial recognition technology, I feel safe with it, um, I think more crime would be solved with it. Even if you were dead set against facial recognition technology, if your constituents wanted it, you would support it, continue to support it?
Well, yeah, I think this is one of my biggest things, I I think it's so important to know, is like, when you talk to the residents, you have to be able to have these conversations. And also educating them, because a lot of misinformation goes out, so people are like, it's gonna be on the traffic cameras, it's gonna be soon as you walk anywhere you go. You're gonna be able to, and it's not that way, they use specific cameras for it, they use uh specific cam. They use specific cameras for it, they use uh specific cameras, and also um so I think some of the green lights are one of them, somebody is trying to call my phone, I don't know, how's that working out? Uh let me just shut it, but so those are, those things are specific, and it's very detailed, so I don't if if I believe if you have these conversations with the community, explain to them how it's being led, that a lot of people um will feel like more comfortable with it, but of course, you still got the issue of people getting misidentified, and you do not want that happening.
That's what I'm saying, I'm like, what if it's one of their relatives that's misidentified, they get locked up, or what if it's you? I'm just saying, I already, even without facial recognition, there are black people, you got the Innocence Project, they need to be expanded in the funding. You got black people, there's, white people can misidentify us, black people, we can misidentify ourselves, so I'm like, I I don't know, I did, for me, I'm for green light, but facial recognition, the jury is still out on that, I mean, cuz that's.
Well, I guess, like I said, I go back to my main point, is that there are so many loved ones walking around here and don't know, don't have closure to somebody that murdered their their family member, you know, there was, I don't know if you all uh remember, I don't know if you all remember this case, but there was a case where a man, I don't know exactly the entire situation, I I don't even like talking about stuff like this, but it just comes to mind, um he was set up like a like a transvestite, and so, and so what ended up happening was he got really upset, he killed like two or three of them, and the only way they were able to get him is because he walked into a green light gas station, and he had some of the same clothes, and that's how they were able to match who he was.
So green light, I'm not saying, I don't have a problem with green light, but I mean, facial recognition technology, I unless you can say it's error-proof, I'm I'm just, I'm concerned, you know.
They use facial recognition to be able to find him in the system. So that's how they're able to find him, because they didn't know, you know, nobody really knew how to identify him. And it wasn't like, they didn't put out a big thing, so they used the facial recognition to identify him, and that's how, you know, they came up with the lead, and then they continued on with the case, and was able to find out that was actually him who committed those crimes. And so I believe, like I said, I want a few things for this city. We want to be able to bring closure to families, there's certain, we're gonna be have to use different technologies to make sure that we're doing that. There there's a technology that um it can get your license plate, some people might disagree with this, it's it's a technology that we talked about.
Automatic license plate readers.
Yeah, and so if you're riding around.
Automated license plate readers, so you you are for um automatic or automated license plate readers?
So um a few years ago, my friend came back, came to Detroit, and I was like, hyping up Detroit, hyping up Detroit, went out to dinner, came back to his car, his laptop was gone, every few, and when I tell you, he still bugs me about this today, I came to Detroit, and I'm like, and so one of the things, you know, we talked about, is how do we stop people from doing that? So individuals that goes, go around and drive around downtown over and overlooking, you know, some of that stuff, now it comes up. We need technology like that to be able to prevent crimes, and that's important to me. Like, we need to be able to find other ways, especially, we just talked about the no snitch rule, everybody say, we're not snitching.
I just think, you know, Tucson, the concern is the protection of people's constitutional rights, privacy rights and civil liberty, you know. Um I have myself taken a tour of the Real-Time Crime Center, I was invited uh to take a tour, and I did um before the pandemic hit, a very impressive uh operation. My thing is this, I'm all for technology, but it has to be used properly, and there has to be a legal framework and a policy put in place to protect people's constitutional rights and civil liberties and privacy rights, that is my only concern. And you say that you're satisfied with it as it stands now, but I tell you, one issue that I have is um facial recognition technology pulling uh people's photos from social media, because we know that, you know, people can spoof you, they can um like, I think, you know, one time there was somebody that stole my identity and created um a a Facebook page, you know, and I had to shut down my page. So it's just um, it's 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 a, it's a interesting discussion. But I do want to, in the waning moments, we've only got about five minutes, I want to ask you about um the demographics of your district. And are there um a lot of seniors in your particular district, or are they, do they tend to be middle-aged or younger families?
Well, I think um it's actually, um it's a good mixture here, you have young seniors. Now, when you look at like people who consistently vote, of course, those are like the uh sixty and above, but um but yeah, the demographics, if you go down, when you walk down these streets, you see different people, you see what I love about it, you see different family moving in. I was just at a cleanup earlier, where a guy said he moved in two years ago, he came to California, and he helped clean up his neighborhood. So you see different type of individuals um in this district, and I'm, you know, I'm just pretty, it's exciting to see that people still love the city. They still wanna be a part of his comeback, um and that's great to me.
Okay, so it's a mix. Um are you gonna be encouraging people to vote absentee or to do mail-in voting as a carryover from election cycle twenty twenty, where, you know, a lot of people voted for the first time, you know, during the pandemic um by mail? Uh do you think that's a trend that's going to continue in your election cycle?
Um, it will be interesting to see, I think um there's not a lot of, you know, a lot of people do not have a lot of interest in some of the primaries, if it's not like in a presidential year, but I believe like what we did last year, seeing all those absentee values, it got more people engaged, and I'm hoping that can happen this year as well. I'm not saying we have the presidential numbers, but.
Well, yeah, but you still, I think, I I think actually, whatever works the best for people, if it's absentee, if that works, but it's coming in person, but if you come in person, you need to make sure you, that your your vote is gonna count, they're not gonna shut stuff down on you. And I do wanna go back to Attorney Martin, what she was talking about with the technology. With the technology, it's like, you want the technology, you want people who are victims of crime, that they're, that they're vindicated, but at the same time, as a criminal defense attorney, I I'm 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 still on the fence, because you have, you have constitutional rights, like Attorney Martin said, um right to privacy and be free from illegal search and seizure, so when you have a lot of people in Detroit, they are indigent, they may not have their driver's license, they may not have like their um their insurance, and so they get, they get tagged by the police, they get sucked into the vacuum, and and they get a warrant, and then they're arrested, and then it's a slippery slope, and so what what would you do to protect those people who maybe, you know, maybe they can't fix something on their car, and and they are getting profiled, it's pretext stops, basically, they get, what would you do to protect those interests?
Yeah, no, that, and that's very important, I think it goes back to the community policing conversation, and how do you make sure, and and I I would be, I would love to see the numbers on there, like how do people feel that way? Cuz I I know, when I talk to some of my mentees, when I talk to other people, they don't feel that the Detroit Police harasses them on those on those type of things, they just, they don't feel that, that's that's the conversation I'm having. Now, you go across eight mile, it might be a different discussion, that's totally different discussion. But here, you, I feel like you don't have that, and I I know it's a difficult decision, it's a difficult discussion. I've just sat in a room across from people, families that, you know, lives are destroyed because someone murdered their son, someone murdered their daughter, and they cannot, they cannot find a lead, because no one will talk, you know, people won't give up any information. So I just feel like, we need to find ways to be able to be, to solve these issues, to solve these crimes, and uh get families closure. And so I'll stand on that, I know it's a little contro- controversial, but I have to stand on what I think is important. And I will also be the one that many will say and listen, if it does not work, if this is going the wrong way, then we need to stop it, we're not gonna where, you know, I'm not gonna just continue on something that is like on a failing path. But for what I have seen so far, there has been like, you know, like, like I said, Detroit Will Breathe was against the green light completely, green light, and I'm like, you saw a lot of different crimes stop, people feel more comfortable going to gas stations because of green, of the green light program, and I think, you know, we have to keep these programs going.
Actually, I find the green light program a little off-putting, I'm a Detroiter, and I tend to avoid businesses with green light technology I'm uh you know, against facial recognition technology in terms of the policy that, you know, it's connected with now. But I have this burning question, um I don't know if you saw recently in the news, there was a story about Detroit Public Schools um giving five hundred dollar incentives to teachers to get the COVID vaccinations. And so, um I don't know if you can discuss it because of your connection with DPSCD, but just um as a individual, as a private citizen, what do you think about that? Because I understand that this is kind of like a pilot program to see if the city of Detroit might adopt some payments to get more people to get the vaccine, what's your take?
Yeah, um so I work for Detroit Public Schools, and I got the email as well, you know, I, it's simple, it says that um individuals that take the vaccine, you know, um they have a five hundred dollar incentive, and I believe it's to really set the, you know, set the stage for when when the next school year come, how many teachers can we get back into the classrooms and things like that? Because a lot of people can say, well, I didn't take the vaccine, I'm not coming, if if I think Dr. Viti's a very smart guy, and so I I remember them doing a poll, saying that, asking how many people plan on getting the vaccine. That's the first quote, and I wanna say, I don't think he released those numbers, but I believe it was a high number of individuals saying, if I can access access the vaccine, I'll get it. I don't know if they're seeing the same numbers, like for example, I remember like when he said he would do the five hundred dollar incentive, I never even submitted my vaccine paperwork, but I did, and I believe that.
Does your religion prevent you from getting the COVID vaccine?
No, we have been encouraging people, and I think like a personal story with me is that last year, I lost my mom and my aunt in the same month.
I'm very sorry, you have a condolences.
Yeah, I appreciate that, and so what I understand is like, I wish they could have had the vaccine, I'm sure, you know, a lot of family members feel the same way, so I'm I'm definitely not against the vaccine, I'm pushing a lot of people, you know, to get the vaccine uh for their family members, to keep them safe, and also help us get back to normal, and especially get our kids back to school. Because if you talk to any parent during this time, they are pulling out their hair.
I know, they they ready to lose that, they're talking all that crap about the teachers, and now they like, oh my goodness, they like praise the teachers, praise them. And I mean, I'm with you about the vaccine, but again, people need to talk to their doctors, cuz some people might have conditions like MS where you can't get the vaccine, but I would say, I got the vaccine, I know Tracy got the vaccine, I got Moderna. Um I'm I'm pro-vaccine, but again, we, folks, you gotta talk to your doctor, cuz if you got a condition that that you might be affected by the vaccine, that then you need to, you need to, you respond accordingly, you know.
Yeah, no, and I think like uh, I got the Pfizer, so yeah, and then I I mean, you're right, it's just like, it's just different. Uh I I think um, I would definitely encourage people to get the vaccine, and I would also encourage people, because like, if you look at the kids, I don't know how these kids are sitting at a table all day, I I was like, it's no way I could do that, it's no.
I'm curious, Tucson, you said that you got, um did you say Pfizer?
Yeah, Pfizer.
Did you get it at at the TCF Center or Private Doctor's Officer Clinic?
Uh I got it, so because of the work I do at Seapire, I actually got it at, I believe it was like the DPD Training Center or something like that. To get it early on, early on.
You know, I, it's interesting, you said you received the vaccine at the DP uh D Training Center?
Yeah.
DPD?
DPD, I I'm not exactly, it's 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 a facility ran by the Detroit Police and Detroit Fire Department. I'm not sure if it's the Training Center or, but it's, it was a facility ran by them, that they were doing it for the police officers, people connected with um public safety.
First responders, right, well, the reason why I bring that up is because um I can, I can't reveal the source, but I have a source who says, shockingly, that uh seventy percent of uh DPD, Detroit Police Department, the officers on DPD are not vaccinated, because apparently there's some vaccine hesitancy, and I just found that remarkable, and that's a rhetorical question, you don't have to respond to that.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know the exact numbers, so I wouldn't be able to respond to that.
Right, right, right.
Defon, so he can give us his firsthand.
Yes, Robin, we're going to have Chief Craig, well, we're going to invite him, I don't know if he will come on, but we'll see. Um but this has been a great discussion on uh Political Coffee, our Meet the Candidate segment. You, we've been talking with Tucson Knight, he's a candidate for Detroit City Council in District Four. It's an open seat, and a primary is coming up in August, um what date is it uh this year, Tucson? Is it August the second?
August third.
Oh, I was wondering, uh.
Double check you now, yeah, but yeah, that's what I'm thinking, it was August third, so.
August third, well, it's wonderful to meet you, and it was great talking with you, and best of luck out there on the campaign trail. Uh we hope to see you again, coming back uh and talking with us uh before the general election, if you have time for us uh in the near future.
I will always have time for you all, and I really, uh I I really do appreciate that, for sure, I really appreciate you all.
And I, you know, I echo what Tracy just said, and you know, you have an amazing background, I mean, whether it's on city council or elsewhere, I definitely see you going places, I I'm, you have a very powerful story, and uh you know, kudos to you for the work that you do with the young folk, because you know, that's what we need to do, we have to pour into our children, our youth, because they are our future, so kudos to you. So uh this has been Political Coffee with Robin and Tracy, and Tucson Knight, candidate for uh Detroit City Council, fourth district, so I hope everybody has a blessed day. And Tucson, um definitely share your information with us, so we can share it on our, the Facebook video, and you.
Oh, yeah, right, before we go, give us your website, please.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, TucsonKnight.com, um and my email is TucsonForDetroit@gmail.com.
And so if anyone wants to volunteer on your campaign or donate, they can hit you up there.
Yes, please, please go to my website, we have a lot of information on there about my, about what I wanna fight for, and about how to volunteer and do anything.
Wonderful, kudos to you, thanks again.
Yep, kudos to you, all right, well, you guys have a blessed Saturday, and I'll talk with you later, it's been Political Coffee.
Bye, everybody, bye, Robin, bye, Tucson, good luck on the campaign.
Thank you.
Yep, good luck.